Welcome to the February 27th City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Helgason, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for this city. Lord, we thank you for the fact that we can meet freely, that we can discuss openly. Lord, I pray that you will give us wisdom, give us collegiality where we can disagree, disagree agreeably. Lord, I pray that you will bless our time. Thank you so much that we get to honor the fine young students from LCA that have worked so hard and their, and they're so diligently to perfect their art of cheerleading. Thank you, Lord, that we can honor as we remember our veterans today. Lord, I pray that you will bless this meeting, help us to be humble servants for you, give us wisdom that only comes from you. We thank you for the fact that we are here and we are free and that you love us. Lord, we thank you for all your wonderful blessings. I pray that you will again give us insight, give us clarity, heal our city, and Lord, bless our meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have several recognitions. The first is for Liberty Christian Academy Varsity Coed Cheer Team. It gives me great pleasure to shine a spotlight on the remarkable accomplishments of the LCA Varsity Coed Cheer Team for their amazing achievement at the UCA National High School Cheer Championships held at the ESPN Wild World of Sports Complex. After winning four individual regional competitions, the LCA Cheer Team qualified to attend the Universal Cheerleaders Association National High School Cheer Championships in Orlando, Florida. In attendance were over 27,000 athletes and 1,183 teams. The Bulldogs advanced all the way to the final round in both the game day division and the small coed division. They were the only team from Virginia to advance to the final round. The Bulldogs placed ninth in the game day and history-making fourth in small coed. The team is coached by Susan Hunter with assistant coaches Morgan Preston and Morgan Andrews and is made up of 20 girls and four boys. We would love to have them come forward for a picture, please. Now y'all are more than welcome to stay and get a lesson in local government, or you can go home and do your homework. Also good. Thank you. We're now talking about the Governor's Award for Excellence in Community Risk Reduction for the Lynchburg Fire Department. Tonight continues to be a momentous occasion as we celebrate the outstanding achievements of our Lynchburg Fire Department. Thanks to the collaborative efforts of the Lynchburg Fire Marshal's Office and the University of Lynchburg Bonner Program, the department has been chosen as the recipient of this year's Governor's Award for Excellence in Community Risk Reduction. I'd now like to call Fire Chief Wormsor up to the podium to tell us more.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, it is with immense pride that I accepted the Governor's Award for Excellence in Community Risk Reduction on behalf of the men and women of the Lynchburg Fire Department. This honor is a testament to the dedication, professionalism, and passion of each and every member of the department team, some of whom are with me today, coupled with our commitment to collaborate with community stakeholders like the University of Lynchburg. Walkabout Wednesday came to fruition through the Bonner Program at the University of Lynchburg. Intern Natalie Coats is with us tonight from the university, standing right behind me, who worked with the Fire Marshal's Office staff and our data analysts created a data-driven approach to community risk reduction by analyzing calls for service and then subsequently coordinating door-to-door walkthroughs through at-risk neighborhoods throughout our city. Over several weeks, this program resulted in more than 168 smoke alarms installed, more than 50 smoke alarm batteries changed, and more importantly, countless interactions and conversations that connected our citizens to resources across our community. To every member of our team who's out there listening tonight and who participated in Walkabout Wednesday initiatives, thank you. Your efforts have not only safeguarded our community but have also transformed the lives for the better, and I am proud of the work we accomplished. To the University of Lynchburg and the Bonner Program, thank you for embracing our department mission. Our strong relationship and your university and various, with your university and various programs and internships speaks to the impact in our community and how you prepare your students for the future. When you add in the American Red Cross and the staff at C&amp;B Materials and Handling of Lynchburg, what we have is a successful community risk reduction program and initiative that identifies, addresses, and mitigates risks, thus ensuring the safety and well-being of all the residents through our thoughtful and proactive approach. Together, we've achieved this wonderful award, and it is my honor and privilege to serve alongside the best in the fire service, in our Commonwealth and in the country, as we continue our mission to be first in safety, first in service, and first in community. Thank you.
And I will be about to come down and leave the award and take a picture with all of you, does okay? All right. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Just pull the minutes from the 28th until the next meeting. I've talked to Alicia about some issues with them.
The 28th?
Yeah, the minutes from the 28th and just vote on them in the next meeting. I'm trying to work a couple little issues out with those minutes.
Okay, do I have consensus from the council to do that? No?
Yes.
We're good? Okay. So we'll move to approve the consent agenda minus the meetings for the 28th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Okay. We're just gonna go ahead and do a voice vote, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mischens?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Yes.
The motion passes. Seven seconds.
All right, great. Moving on to the public hearing, the next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to counsel for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the letting of property at the Monument Terrace Building and to approve a lease agreement between CASA of Central Virginia, Inc. and the City of Lynchburg. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Gaynell-Hart.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, this item was before you at the February 13th work session. Again, we are requesting you renew the lease with CASA for a portion of the Monument Terrace Building located at 901 Church Street. The lease was with CASA, was first approved in 2012, amended last in 2019, and the proposed lease includes all the office space that they are currently using now, including 136 square foot foyer. With that, I will be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Kelly Diaz, and I am the Recruitment and Development Director at CASA of Central Virginia, so I am here representing them. I am here tonight to request you renew the five-year lease between CASA and the City of Lynchburg for the office space in the Monument Terrace Building. I stand before you tonight, not just as a representative of CASA, but as a voice for the most vulnerable members of our community, our children. I urge you to consider the profound impact that your decision regarding our lease agreement will have on the lives of the countless children who desperately need our support. For any of you who are not familiar, CASA, or Court-appointed Special Advocates, plays a crucial role in the lives of children who have experienced abuse or neglect. We recruit, train, and support volunteers who are advocates for these children and their voices in the overwhelming and often complex legal system. Since CASA was started here 35 years ago in Lynchburg by the late Judge Dale Harris, we have served over 5,000 children. We are currently the third-largest program out of 27 CASA programs in the state of Virginia. Last year, 79 CASA volunteers served 221 children who suffered abuse or neglect. Fifty-one percent of those children were right here in Lynchburg. Our local judges are great supporters of the CASA program. They tell us that they read the CASA report before they read any other report because they know that our CASA volunteers know that child the best. Councilman Hegelson, you said that CASA does good work. I would say to you that it is much more than good work. We do crucial work, imperative work, work that is necessary as long as one child in our community is not safe. We provide a service to children that is not duplicated by any other nonprofit in our area. Our work is a commitment to ensure that every child in our community has the opportunity to have a safe, permanent, and loving home. The support that we receive from the City of Lynchburg, particularly through the provision of free office space, is absolutely vital to us being able to carry out our work. Our partnership with the city has allowed us to serve hundreds of children and families in need. It has provided us with a stable and accessible location from which to coordinate our efforts with the five other localities we serve in addition to Lynchburg: Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, Campbell, and Nelson. Our office in Lynchburg is the central hub of our operations. It allows us to be close to the J.D. and R. Court, which our staff and volunteers are in every day, to be close to service providers that our staff are in contact with each day, a location in which to conduct information sessions to educate the community on how they can become CASA volunteers, have confidential meeting with our volunteers, and to conduct eight-week training classes for individuals who wish to become CASA volunteers. At each information session, open house, and training, we proudly give tours of our office space and talk about how much we value the city's support of our program. In fact, at this moment, our executive director, Allison Stronza, who would have loved to have been here speaking, is leading a training class in our office space of seven community volunteers who will become CASAs in April. But perhaps most importantly, the partnership with the City of Lynchburg has sent a strong and powerful message to our community that the city values the well-being of its children and is committed to supporting CASA as we work tirelessly to secure their safety and support. I ask you to reaffirm that commitment tonight by voting in favor of continuing to provide CASA with free office space for the next five years. I understand that the city has many demands on its resources and budget considerations are a concern, but I urge you to consider the cost of not supporting CASA and the children that we serve. Councilman Mischens, you said it seems that you're choosing winners and losers. I'm here to tell you that without the support of CASA in our city, the children are who will be the losers. They will be the ones who are left without a voice in the legal system. They would be left to navigate the complexities of foster care, the court system, and the effects of abuse and neglect alone, without a CASA volunteer to advocate for their best interests. The consequences of this are simply too great to ignore. Studies have shown that children who have a CASA volunteer are half as likely to re-enter the foster care system. They are more likely to find a safe and permanent home and are more likely to succeed in school. Also, research shows that children with a CASA volunteer spend, on average, eight months less in foster care than those without. These stats show us that the services CASA provides save the city money in foster care because of the important work we do. By continuing to support CASA through the provision of free office space, you are not just investing in our organization but in the future of the community. You're ensuring that children who are hurting have a voice. In closing, I urge you to vote in favor of renewing our lease agreement. As a vote in favor of this will speak loudly as to who is important in our city. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of the most vulnerable members of our community, our children. Children who can do nothing to change their circumstances but with a CASA by their side can have hope for a better future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. Honorable members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and community members, my name is Rex Hammond, and I've been a resident and homeowner in Lynchburg since 1999. Thank you for providing this opportunity to discuss a matter of utmost importance: the future of the region's Court-appointed Special Advocates, also known as CASA. Today, I stand before you to advocate for granting CASA another five-year lease, recognizing the exceptional work that they do and the powerful impact that they have on our community. It has been my honor to serve as a CASA for almost two years. I can attest to the quality of the CASA staff and the growing base of volunteers who serve as CASAs. Why this location? There are two issues that I invite you to consider. First, the current Church Street facility and location is uniquely suited for an organization like CASA. The organization is currently situated between the J&amp;D Court Building and the Department of Social Services. Throughout the duration of the current lease, there have been thousands of trips to these locations. The 901 Church Street location is convenient for CASA staff and volunteers and shaves hundreds of hours of transportation time, allowing them to allocate this time to the organization's mission. There are few, if any, organizations that can benefit from this location to the same extent as CASA. Secondly, CASA has made a comfortable home at the Church Street location, and I see no compelling reason to disrupt the good work that CASA does for the entire region. As we all know, moving an entire organization would impair its effectiveness, temporarily at least, and would divert its attention away from its core mission. If there's a single word that describes the reason for extending the arrangement being discussed this evening, that word would be hope. I've seen it myself. There are an endless number of stories that could be told about CASA effectiveness in changing the trajectory of the lives of these children and families. In conclusion, I urge you to recognize the exceptional contributions of CASA and grant them the support they need through another five-year lease. By doing so, we affirm our commitment to the well-being of our community's children and the belief that every child deserves a voice and an advocate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Bernbaum, and I serve as a board member for CASA of Central Virginia for the last three years. I'm here representing them. I've served as treasurer for the last two years, and I was a volunteer advocate for a year before that. Thank you for your time this evening to hear us out. I wanted to start by asking you to consider a few different lenses that I'd like to present to you, a couple comments this evening. The first is a financial lens, just to kind of give you, to lay the land. We do receive financial support from all of our surrounding counties: Bedford, Amherst, Appomattox, Nelson County. And all of these counties do provide either an in-kind donation through space and/or financial grants. And so if we were to remove this financial support with this rent/lease agreement, we would have a disproportionate support coming from other counties compared to cases that we have in Lynchburg. We have over 50% of our cases here. I would also share that last year was the first year of many that we actually ran a deficit. We had a, we struggled financially just due to inflationary environment, rising costs, as many of you are aware with household expenses. And so it was the first year that we actually had to dip into some cash reserves in order to sustain our operating expenses. I can, I can tell you that when we think about the, I think the fair market value of the lease was quoted at $48,000. Our budget would not be able to sustain that in current state. I can, I can assure you of that. The second lens that I ask you to consider is really community impact, social impact, health impact. Many of you may be familiar with Dr. Nadine Burke-Harris. She created the ACEs score to help us understand how adverse childhood events and trauma with children help affect outcomes long-term. I'd like to share with you just a couple stats related to what was found. Childhood trauma increases the risk for seven out of 10 of the leading causes in death in the United States. It's also true that if left untreated, children with a high ACE, which is Adverse Childhood Events, score face a 20-year decrease in overall life expectancy compared to those who don't experience it. When I was thinking about the overall community impact and health impact, I found some of these statistics to be helpful. Children who experience four or more of these adverse childhood events are seven times more likely to suffer from alcoholism, are 12 times more likely to attempt suicide. When it comes to education, children who experience two or more of these events and trauma are nearly three times more likely to repeat a grade. Not supporting this is definitely going to impact our community, and I would just urge you to consider that. In closing, I was a little bit apprehensive to share more of a personal touch, but I think it's important because I think it's, it's important that you understand that this organization has real impact. When I was 12, I was removed from my home due to an abusive and neglect situation. I had a CASA advocate to come alongside me to help me, guide me through a process where I was in a group home, two foster care homes, and then a kinship placement where I was adopted. Because of that CASA advocate, I was able to graduate high school, got a college degree, a master's degree, have an excelling career, and a family with a two-and-a-half-year-old home. I'm not a statistic because of this organization. And so when it comes to favoritism, which I know was quoted last year, I would just urge you to think about the favoritism of our children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So anyone here else here who would like to speak in favor of CASA? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
Sir.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Vice Mayor Frawley?
Need approval?
Okay, he has a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Or, I'm sorry, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll defer.
Okay. Would you like to speak, Dr. Wilder?
Again, just to amend the organization, the mighty work they do in our community. I've been a foster parent for 25 years, and I've worked with CASA during the whole time period. So I appreciate the hard work they do, the dedication. And for one of my foster kids, he had a paid mentor. The CASA worker came more times than a paid worker did. So I really appreciate that dedication to our children, and it provides a great service to our community and an awesome partnership. So thank you.
(Inaudible).
Just a quick question, Mr. Bendah, on number three on the rent. It sounds a little, it says the lessor lets, the premises to less see for a one-time payment of $50,000 annually. Normally, one-time and annually are kind of, usually to me, sound different. Which shall be waived in lieu of the city making an annual contribution. So as was just stated, the fair market value, I think he said, was $48,000. So reading this language, what does that really say? Is it annual? Is it one-time? Those are typically the opposite. And then the difference between the 20 and the 48?
Yeah. So Kent White, who's been managing this, when he's out of town today, he's traveling for business, which is good. So the way that I understand this is that the city, at some point specific, ceased doing an annual appropriation and changed to rent. And so to divine there what that payment of $20,000 annually shall be waived in lieu of, that's, I think, going back to what originally you appropriated as an outside appropriation to them instead of what you, what you're considering to do now, which is to provide them lease space.
And I think when you look at and read the original documentation in 2012, it showed that CASA is making a $20,000 investment to improve the property. I don't know if any of you had, were there at that time.
I was not there. Whether or not they made an improvement of that value, I'd have to ask.
Something to improve it, and then in exchange, it was, we familiar with that or the language?
Prior to the lease, prior to the lease, the city was making a $12,000 annual contribution to CASA. When we signed the lease, CASA, CASA committed to making a $20,000 investment in the facility, and the city agreed to stop making the $12,000 payment. So, so over, over time, you know, from a dollars and cents standpoint, you know, $12,000 a year for the last five years would be, you had 60 grand, and they put 20 grand in.
And so with that, on the new lease, so there's still, to me, this new lease sounds like they're still going back to the $20,000 when, you know, on number four on here. It seems very unclear. You know, it gets to...
What'd you say, is there, is there going to be additional capital investment?
Which I don't think they're anticipating. I mean, and I don't, but this lease almost says that they agree to a one-time payment of $20,000, and then it puts in the word annually. I teach finance. When you do one-time payment, that's a single sum. Annually is an annuity payment that continues each year. I don't think either of those were the anticipation on this. So I think when you're approving a lease, you know, some of the items should be, because I think their assumption, as I'm hearing it, is that, the assumption is that the, the rent for this place is waived. And this language, to me, sounds more confusing than it's helpful. Maybe you can...
I would, I would agree with you in that we should probably, as, as you adopt, look to consider taking the third paragraph out, because I think it was from the original lease agreement, oversight by myself and staff, and thank you for having pointed it out.
Oh, good. And two, I'm thankful, you know, this came up a few weeks ago, I guess, just not as a public hearing, but it came up through our business item briefings, and with that, there were several things like this and others that were in here that were a little puzzling and thought maybe it'd be a good thing to kind of look at the lease as a one-year at first rather than going with this. You know, the good thing about this is, quite frankly, is when there was discussion, if there weren't have been discussion, I bet the three of you went to come. We had some discussion. The three of you got to come and say why this organization is so critical, which is a good thing. So I think that's a good thing, you know, to make sure that people understand what you do. And, you know, I've known about it through Bethany Harrison and before for a long period of time, as far as the good work that is done. With that, I think the language needs to be modified, but I'm glad to hear your comments today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Since there was, those comments were absent of motion or recommendation, what would the solution be?
Motion on the strike item three, I think.
You have to have some type of consideration in the lease for it to be a valid lease. So if, if you want, if council in a consensus as part of its motion wants to change its motion to simply say, you know, any arbitrary dollar amount in lieu of a contribution, it can do that, but I do think there has to be some type of acknowledgement that there is a money value to the lease to give it legal effect.
Madam Mayor, so I would understand it to say that the current iteration of the language is structured to show the value of what a lease would be, because that'd only be fair. That's my, that's how I see it. And then furthermore, because that's the actual value in fair market... And then furthermore, because that's the actual value in fair market, that's being voided. Is, am I on track there?
So I don't know if I could say this is fair market, but it is something that I understand the city and CASA, you know, were aware of and agreed to at the time we submitted this lease to counsel.
In other, in other words, if I may interject, in other words, it would be unfair to make it $1, because that means $1 lease would actually have to be what we would market it to other people. So it actually makes more sense to keep it at the current dollar amount.
I think it's a fair statement.
Because of parity, regardless of who the organization might be. So I, respectfully, I would submit, it actually makes more legal sense from a transactional standpoint to keep it the same.
And to not amend, not to remove, not to remove paragraph three?
You'll keep the same as the 48 that's in-
I'll maintain the-
The fair market value?
Maintain the, the language as is.
Oh, as is. As is, or, or the 48 that's in the fair market value is what?
As currently written.
As currently written, okay.
So the 20?
As currently written.
That's what it is. It's currently 20,000, and in lieu of the payment, there wouldn't be any annual contribution from the city.
If there's an argument for it to be increased, I would have to be, I don't want to say convinced, but understand the logic.
So the argument that I, I thought where you were going was the fact that the city assessor valued this at $15 a square foot, and the square footage, the fair market value today is, I think he put in here 48,270. So the 20,000 was a number that was back in 2012, that was a contribution in lieu of a $12,000 rent or something. So I think the 20,000 is as arbitrary as the dollar. The 48,000 seems to me like what you had put in there, but- And I think changing it to the number Councilman Helgeson had said will end in the same result. It's just illustrating what the rent was. I certainly would see if CASA has an objection to the amendment to the lease, because we're approving it assuming they would sign it. So-
Yeah, that's all fair. If Councilmember Wilder would be in favor, I would amend my motion to reflect the 48,000.
That's fine.
Okay. And would that have any gripes with our friends at CASA? Because it's all going to be voided anyway.
We'd have to take a board vote anyway if there's any changes. Any changes are made. I don't think you have any issues, but-
Could one of you all come forward if you don't mind?
Absolutely. Be in kind of the part of the better.
But that's true. We'd have to take it for board vote if there's any changes whatsoever. I mean, I don't foresee any issues with this. You're just basically reflecting what the market value of the lease is, and it's an in-kind gift via rental, so like, or leasing. So I don't foresee a material issue, but I have no power to approve it solo.
Thank you. Would it make more sense to have a delayed enactment on this pending their action?
You could. Certainly counsel could do that if it wanted to wait to hear what CASA's position was on amending term number three to reflect 40,000 or 48,000, whatever that number was in lieu of 20.
When's your next board meeting?
About November one or two.
Yeah, late March.
March.
When is the lease up?
It's a five-year lease.
When's the current lease up?
That current lease, the renewal was expired. It hasn't been renewed. This is a new lease that's set to start on March 1st. Currently, they're in holdover status. It's, it's my understanding the city has no objection to them remaining-
Yeah.
Until there's a decision made on the lease, so-
So if we did 48,000 effective May 1, would that be enough time?
I think it would give us enough time to at least get a board vote at the end of May and come back.
And then pending, pending their approval, of course.
Yes, we could do that. So what, just for our record, the, the term in number two would change to May 1, 2024. The expiration date would change to the end of April, 2029, and the rent would change to 48,000, is that correct?
Yes.
In lieu of 20,000, but the remainder of the lease would remain the same.
48,270.
48,270. You would change the word to annual and remove that one time, I believe. So we'll say for a payment of 48,270 annually.
Sounds like we're doing a real estate deal.
Okay.
Okay.
So moved if Dr. Wilder would be-
Second, yes.
All right.
Just to, if I could confirm the holdover, would it still be in effect until we get, okay.
Okay, so we're going to vote on delaying this until they have a chance to have their next board meeting?
If I, if I may-
Re-motion?
It's, the motion is to pass as amended. The amendments would be changing it to be 48 to something.
270.
270, thank you, Jeff. Effective May 1st, pending a favorable, favorable vote by your board and changing language to annual. All right?
Okay.
If I could say something. So with that, I think that's, you guys should be very happy. You got an extra two months, and now you have an in-kind contribution as opposed to 20,000. It's 48,270, and it's ac, and it's more accurate, so. And it's, it's actual, so I think it's a good thing.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I, I think there were some comments made at the last meeting around a, just a, there's a termination provision, I don't know if it was 90 days or 120 days. Will that still remain as constant throughout the next agreement?
Yes. And city council, what I would suggest is in lieu of approving this tonight, I would suggest to let them go first, defer this to a definite date in, I would say, the second meeting in March be enough time.
Our, our meeting's the last week of March, so it'd have to be April.
Okay. So the first meeting in April. That way, city council isn't approving something that they may disagree with. April 9.
Okay, so don't vote tonight.
So I'll offer a substitute motion, any consideration on this until April 9.
Okay. Substitution motion.
Was that, was that already what you were doing, Chris, or not?
Do you want to amend your motion to defer? No, so do substitute motion, or would you want to contend this?
All right, let's do this. Would you mind withdrawing?
Sure. I think essentially what we need to do is-
Let, let me do this.
Move it to April 9.
Table one until-
I understand. So let's make up, the motion will be to amend the documentation as I've, as I have articulated.
The lease.
Yep. Councilmember Wilder seconded it. Not approving it or passing it, it is amending it. So let's take that vote, and then we can, by consensus, if it's okay, defer until future time. So that way, it's all lined up for the next meeting. We don't have to change, change it anymore.
That works.
Okay, sure. Before I, anybody else want to speak before I call the vote? Before I call the vote, I just want to say this. I think the lesson that we learned is that it is very important for everybody sitting up here to know what the services in our city do personally. Go and sit with Kelly at CASA. I sat two hours with her and listened to how important the advocates are. I've heard your story. It's amazing, and I'm so happy for you. It's so powerful. It's why I believe in what you do. It's why we need more advocates to be willing to come and serve at CASA, because our children deserve your story. So before we make hasty decisions about winners and losers in our city, we need to know what all of our services do and who they serve and why they're all so important before we make decisions that could be harmful.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. I know you can call the voice vote.
Councilmember Bellin. Councilmember Bellin.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Councilmember Havison.
Yes.
Councilmember Missions.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Yes.
Mayor Reed.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
And Mayor Reed, I would ask by consensus, as Councilmember Missions had indicated, that this be deferred until April 9.
All right.
So long as that's enough.
Agree? Sounds good. Okay, everybody good? Perfect. All right, moving on. Next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a group representative regarding budget for schools, the Sandusky PTO, Colleen Larkins. Please restate your name, group represented, and locality of residence.
My name is Colleen Larkins. I live in Ward 4, and I'm representing Sandusky Elementary PTO. Thank you guys so much for taking the time to listen to me tonight. Earlier this last week, I was in the middle of a crazy event at work, and my pocket kept buzzing. I was on Do Not Disturb, so I worried about who in the world could be calling me five times. It was Lynchburg City Schools. This Dunbar Middle School had been put on restricted entry, which if you're a parent, you know that makes your heart drop slightly, what's going on, what's happening at the school. I reassured myself it's going to be okay. It's something happening outside, not inside. I went about my day, and then later that evening, I got a text message from a friend that said, "Did you see what happened?" And I said, "No." I clicked on the link, and immediately I was hit by a beautiful young woman, one that just graduated from heritage. I saw the words of her grandmother, and my heart hit my stomach. I have thought about her face every day since, but I've also thought about the face of the young man. What led him to that place that he felt like violence was the answer? What led him to the place where a person he was supposed to care for was somebody who ended up not being with us anymore? You might ask, what in the world does that have to do with schools? What in the world does that have to do with budget? Well, it has a lot more to do with it than you think. I know that we face two issues in Lynchburg right now. Violence is one of them. The other one is literacy. Did you know that students who do not have proficient literacy in fourth grade, two-thirds of them end up incarcerated or on welfare? 87% of juveniles who face our court system do not have a good literacy rate. My question for you is what is happening to our youth? When you close schools, when we make financial decisions that don't put education first, this is what happens. LCS, Lynchburg City Schools, right now is a house of cards. It's about to come crashing down, and the victims of that crash will be felt for years to come. We already are experiencing an achievement gap, so what happens when we close schools that are succeeding? What happens when accredited schools with low disciplinary rates and high attendance end? When public schools fail, cities fail. So I stand here tonight, not just as a representation of Sandusky PTO, but as a citizen of Lynchburg, seeing what will happen to our city if we do not prioritize education, if we do not have leadership at LCS that can cast a vision and follow through. We will fail. So why am I talking to you about education, you're the city council? Well, about five months ago, when we stood here, you sent us across the street. You said, "Go talk to them." We have for the last five months. We've advocated, we've met with people, we've come up with solutions, and then we've been pointed right back here. No matter who we talk to, we're always told to go somewhere else. If we talk to school administration, we're sent to the school board. If we're sent to the school board, we're sent here. We are in a never-ending merry-go-round, and we'd like to get off. Our children are too important to be stuck in politics. Our city is too important to be stuck in politics. We have to dig in. So my question for you, what I'm asking you today, what I'm begging you truly, is dig in with the school board, dig in with the citizens. The definition of insanity is trying the same thing over and over and hoping for different results. Our results haven't been good so far, so let's change them. Let's change for the betterment of Lynchburg City. We have spent too much time, effort, and energy making this city a place I feel safe walking with my kids, and I do feel safe walking with my kids at bright nights and downtown, but we could lose that all if we do not prioritize our kids' education. So please, not only rebuild Sandusky, but put our education at the center of our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Now hear from a citizen regarding ceasefire, Leila Darar. There, if I'm saying it wrong, please correct me, okay? Is it, which one is it?
Dar.
Dar, okay, thank you. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Leila Darar, and I've lived in Lynchburg since 2008. Thank you for having me tonight. Jesus and Muhammad, peace be upon them, both taught us that God created human beings and loved them all regardless of faith or nationality. Yet right now, we are sending billions of dollars-
Point of war.
Billions of tax dollars.
Are any ideas related to city business or be able to be conducted via public comment?
That's correct. That's our rules of procedure for public commenters. So if, if the speaker isn't addressing matters that concern the city directly, or its operations, or its officers, the council's within its rights with the presiding officer to direct a correction of the same or not to permit the comment.
I am speaking about current issues in Lynchburg.
All right, so that said, I think the presiding officer could give the speaker some leeway to see where it leads, and if not, then to redirect the speaker or not allow the comment.
Okay, as long as this has to do with Lynchburg business, I'll, I'll allow you to continue.
Our tax dollars are paying for genocide, while right here in Lynchburg, we have human beings who are unable to care for themselves, the homeless, who need us to help them, and our students in our public schools, who need help in coping with personal horrors that could be helped if we had the funds to do so. We need, we need those billions of tax dollars here in our country to help us. We don't need to send those dollars that we, the people, give our government to kill and maim the people of Gaza and the West Bank. We need those tax dollars here in Lynchburg and in all our, all in, all our American cities. As our local government, please write and beg our national government to stop supporting a genocide, to stop supporting a genocide-
Point of war.
-in the land Jesus was born in. Please convince-
Point of war. Comments are not related to city business.
Ma'am, I support what you're saying as far as what we need to do in our own city, but we, we really shouldn't, it has nothing to do with what you're talking about as far as the national issues. We're not, are not Lynchburg issues.
Can you let me-
I'm sorry.
Continue.
If you want to talk about what we need to do here in Lynchburg, you can talk about Lynchburg issues, but the national issues are not Lynchburg issues.
But our, our tax dollars are funded.
We can talk about local tax dollars and what we can do locally with those dollars, but not the national, not the national tax dollars.
But our tax dollars can go to-
We can talk about Lynchburg revenue being spent on Lynchburg, you know, issues, but that's it. So if you want to talk about the Lynchburg homeless issue, we can talk about that.
Yes. Please convince our government to help the vulnerable.
We move to agenda item number nine under public comment.
Please push for a ceasefire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Okay, moving on to hear from a group representative regarding rebuilding Sandusky Elementary School. Save Sandusky, rebuild Sandusky, Cynthia Capps. Please restate your name, group represented, and locality of residence.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Cynthia Capps. I'm a lifelong resident of Lynchburg, and I am a former LCS employee proudly representing Save Sandusky, rebuild Sandusky. Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and council members, please do not approve a budget from your school board with $20 million for additions to Bass Elementary. Instead, work with your school board to put a line item in for Sandusky Elementary to[1763.96] Instead, work with your school board to put a line item in for Sandusky Elementary to operate and then use those dollars to rebuild or renovate Sandusky Elementary. With so many new housing developments being built in the Sandusky area, it seems irresponsible to close our school. Mayor Reed has spearheaded an initiative to address student literacy issues in Lynchburg and I'm excited that I'm going to have an opportunity to participate in that. An easy, successful way to improve student literacy is to keep class sizes small and to fund our schools. Under the proposed budget cuts, the help that students need to strengthen and further develop their literacy skills will be cut. Overcrowded classrooms and not giving students quality instruction cultivates an unsafe environment as well as unproductive citizens. It's been five months since school closures were announced and your school board still has no plan. As of the last school board meeting on February 20th, your school board had no more information to give our families and our staff than they did on the day that the closures were announced. For five months, we have come to you, city council, asking for your help in keeping our school open and we have been told to go to your school board. Various and multiple Sandusky supporters, including parents, staff, students, and community members, have spoken at every available public comment opportunity since September of 2023 and your school board has sent us right back here to you tonight. During a recent school board meeting earlier this month, members of your school board said to us, and I quote, and we have it on video as well, "I'm tired of hearing about it. Take your fight across the street." Your school board member said this to our Sandusky families. So we are back here tonight doing just that, advocating for our students and staff nonstop because you all know and your school board knows that closing Sandusky is the wrong decision. Uprooting children and severing those relationships between teachers and school staff and their students benefits no one. I will leave you with this. Closing a school that is accredited at almost full capacity and has a lower chronic absences rate won't help our students or our city in any way. Make the right decision, the one that will benefit our children and our citizens who are employees of Lynchburg City Schools, add a line item to operate and to rebuild Sandusky Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to hear from a citizen regarding LCS budget and potential impacts. Jordan Nesbit. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Hello, my name's Jordan Nesbit and I am located in Ward Four. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and parent to voice some thoughts on the budget and potential impacts of the current path that the LCS school board and admin are pursuing. I've been a part of this process since the voting on these scenarios began back during the summer and the past five to six months or so have been a roller coaster that have raised some pretty big questions for myself and others that I know of. As far as I'm aware, the LCS administration and the school board are still working on a budget that is going to include a request for funding to add classrooms at Bass Elementary. While I would love to see an elementary school expanded that needs it, I feel that without a plan in place before they ask for this funding, they're kind of working backwards and I've heard lots of people stand in agreement of that. And now I'm going to echo thoughts that my fellow friends have said, but being the ball in a game of ping pong between this council and LCS is not something I could have ever foreseen myself doing when I moved to Virginia in June of 2022. We've been told by this council, they don't have control of the school board. The school board keeps telling us they can't do things because the council continues to decrease their budget each year. And I can understand why you would want to decrease a budget if you don't trust the spending or decision-making of the school board or the LCS administration. And unfortunately, lots of community members feel the same way. And that school board has made comments, and all of them mostly on video, that we need to come to city council, we need to show up, we need to fight for fair funding and for them to be able to achieve the things that they need to do, we have to come across the street. Well, we've told them, if they give us something to get behind, we'll gladly come, show our support for their decision and their plan and we will back them and we will show up at every meeting here, just like we did there. Unfortunately, they have yet to give us a plan that we can stand behind. So I'm here today, as long as with the rest of them, to ask you to not approve the funding to renovate Bass. There could be and there are better options. You've each received a copy today of a proposal that we gave to LCS admins and school board members, providing data and information as well as a contact of Movement Foundation. Their viable option to partner with us to rebuild Sandusky for a fraction of the cost and sets up a future for renovations for the rest of LCS. We get to improve the number three-raked elementary school in LCS, which has, we're almost at the state average of proficiency in math scores and we're above the state average in reading. Why would you close a school that is excelling in education, behavior, mental, and emotional health and growth in the students? And rebuilding allows for scenario one, which 70% of the community, you guys have heard 100 times over, voted for. Why would we not continue to listen to the people that they're supposed to be serving? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now hear from a group representative regarding ceasefire. Queer Town Hall, Vicente Gonzalez. Please restate your name, group represented, and locality of residence.
My name is Vicente Gonzalez. I'm here representing the Queer Town Hall. And before I'm interrupted, this does have to do with city business because we're asking for the city council to pass a resolution. I'm here representing the Lynchburg Queer Town Hall. Queer Town Hall has been organizing to support trans and LGBTQ youth in Lynchburg City Schools who are being discriminated against by the current LCS board. We stand in solidarity with the efforts of Save Our Schools at Sandusky and TC Miller Elementary Schools and understand that issues of queer phobia, racism, ableism, and the defunding of our public schools are all interconnected. Today, we would like to pivot and stand in solidarity with our comrades across the country who are calling on their local, city, and town councils to pass resolutions demanding a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza. When it comes to this conflict, there is a lot to unpack.
Point of order. Comments not related to city business?
It's related to city business because we're asking for the city council to pass a resolution.
Point of order. The resolution that's being requested is not related to city business.
If it's not related to city business, why have you taken a public stance already?
Madam Mayor, under our rules of procedure, so debate back and forth won't be permitted. With the point of order having been raised, you, Madam Mayor, can make a ruling on what was presented and then direct the speaker as to how to proceed. And if they don't comply in the event it's deemed unrelated to city business, then the public comment can stop.
Mr. Gonzalez, we can talk about things here in Lynchburg. We will not be talking about things overseas. We will not be talking about things at the national level. I understand.
The people have the right to request a resolution be passed by city council. That is city business.
You're right, and that resolution can have things to do with our city, not at the national level, not internationally. So if you want to request a resolution that has to do with things within our city-
There are Palestinians in our community and the majority of this council have taken a public stance on this issue and Liberty University is one of the most outspoken-
We're not here to discuss those things. You can ask for a resolution that has to do with things in this city. Otherwise, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down.
But that's arbitrary.
We've explained to you what you can do. It's not a debate forum.
We asked the city council pass a resolution to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. Your refusal to do this, you are upholding a genocide in Palestine.
Please sit down, thank you. All right, moving on to general business. The next section. The next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriating $189,985 from the Virginia Department of Forestry for tree maintenance and planting. This item went to our finance committee on February 27, 2024 and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So moved.
This does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
No, it did come before finance and it was favorably reported.
Okay. Any discussion on the side room for anybody? Dr. Wilder?
Assets for our community, I think they're receiving some funds from a grant to plant more trees in our community and it just helps to continue to beautify our community and our public works does such an amazing job in keeping our community beautiful. People come in, they can see all the beautiful landscape. Residents can see, be proud of their city. So I appreciate all the work that goes into it for our city staff to keep our city beautiful. Thank you.
Councilor Hugason?
There was discussion and I'm glad, as we looked at this, to kind of learn from some mistakes. Those of us that have been here for a long time have seen trees be planted only to have to be chopped down a little bit later because they are the wrong kind of trees that buckle the sidewalk. And so this, I was, I've asked about that and Gaynell has assured that they're looking at trees that can work very well with sidewalks. They're not going to interfere with power lines where it's going to be a lot of extra problems. We're thankful for a grant that we can plant some more trees. Hopefully, we can even use some of these trees to be planted in some of the parks since we're, that was part of the CIP, that is going to be removed in the upcoming year. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Councilor Delany? Yes. Councilor Hugason?
Yes.
Councilor Mischin?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed? Yes. The motion passed 7-0. Wonderful. Okay, so I don't like to play favorites. But there are a, there's a large group of people left in the audience tonight that we owe a wealth of gratitude to for keeping us safe and for protecting the most beautiful flag that we have standing before us tonight. So I'd first like to applaud all of you sitting here before us. We will now have a consideration of adopting a resolution approving the installation of the additional memorials to Monument Terrace that I know have been a labor of love for this group before us. And I would be happy to hear from Mr. Delaney. This was presented to council during our business item briefings on February 13, 2024. I see that Mr. Bozeman is here and I'm sure that Mr. Delaney, you can take it from here and let us know what needs to be said.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. As you all know, Monument Terrace has been our community's official war memorial and a very sacred space to our veterans for almost exactly a century, ever since the World War I Listening Post Statue was dedicated on Veterans Day of 1926. Tonight, I present to you three proposed new memorials for Monument Terrace, which my colleague Tom Martin discussed with you in the business item briefings on February 13. The first of these new memorials is a bronze plaque recognizing the Gulf War and the Global War on Terror. The location is pictured here in this slide. This is on the Purple Heart Memorial Terrace Level. This slide here shows you a mock-up of the design of the plaque showing the motifs and the actual wording. And as we discussed, if Lynchburg citizens are identified who died in the Gulf War or Global War on Terror, their names can be engraved on the limestone blocks on the walls surrounding the plaque. The second proposal is a bronze sculpture depicting a soldier's battlefield cross, which is a recognized symbol of the ultimate sacrifice among the armed forces. The sculpture would be located at the bottom of Monument Terrace to the left of the World War I memorial in the landscaped area to the left of the stairs. Here are a few photos that show you more detail of the actual bronze sculpture itself. The third and final proposal is for a Purple Heart Memorial Bench to be located on the Purple Heart Memorial Terrace Level, not far from the proposed new Gulf War and War on Terror plaque. Here's what the actual bench looks like. It's about four feet wide in measurement. So, Madam Mayor, as you mentioned, Steve Bozeman is here with us tonight. We've worked with him very closely for almost two years on this project. He also represents the sponsors of two of the three memorials. It's okay with you, I would love for him to be able to come up and say a few words about these things just to represent what I know is such a personal, passionate project for him.
Absolutely. No one, no, we won't let anybody say no. Please come forward, Mr. Bozeman.
Madam Mayor, Vice City Members, City Council Members, I represent all these veterans back here behind me. And the World War II veteran, John Birch, the World War II hero that could not be here tonight. He broke his hip two months ago and he's rehab now. He's 99 years old on August, on September, I mean, January 12th. So he's going to make 100. He's going to see that beautiful memorial out there when he hits that date. But what I'd like to say, thanks to his vision, when he presented it to me back in Memorial Day last year, he said, I have his vision for this battlefield memorial, because he's a World War II veteran of the Battle of the Bulge. And he was a medic. He saw so much carnage at the Battle of the Bulge and he sees our miniature helmets and boots and rifle down there and he just felt compelled that we had to have that. So he came to me and we talked. His vision became my passion. So I took it up. I got with the vets, we had a fundraiser, we got the money raised very easily. We ordered it, not knowing that eventually the city council would approve it. But we have faith that it would be approved. And we ordered it, it's sitting over at Bear Memorial right now, waiting to be dedicated and mounted. And all the costs would not be for the city. It's been paid by all the veteran groups in Lynchburg. Now, speaking behalf of the Soldiers' Cross and the Purple Heart Memorial, the bench, and Peter Bryant with the Militarier of World Wars, he's talking about the plaque that they're going to put up there. So all three of them together is going to be complementing the Gulf War and the Global War on Terror, which is still going on. We're still losing troops. So we hope we don't have any more from Lynchburg. But there is one from Lynchburg. David Skiles was killed in the Pentagon on 9/11. So his name will be engraved. Walt Disney had a quote, "If you can dream it, it can be done." Words to that effect. And by golly, I think we've done it. And I hope that y'all approve it and we can vote unanimously and we'll get that done pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I would like to be the one to make the motion that we approve these beautiful additions to Monument Terrace. Do I have a second? I, I love everyone sitting out there. There's one I love the most, but I'll let y'all guess. I'll let y'all guess which one. And I'm so thankful for all that you do and have done and all of whom you represent. Mr. Bozeman, we all love you very much and I know everybody out there appreciates all that you've done for our city and all of whom you help. You are a humble servant and many people don't know all that you've done, but I know a lot of what you've done. And thank you, thank you for your hard work, what you do for us every Friday and all that you stand, all of you all of you that stand out in the rain and cold and snow and wind. You haven't, y'all haven't seen me in a while because I'm not as brave as you. But I know that you're out there. So thank you and it is our honor to support, like I said, this labor of love and honor all of you that have given so much for our country so that we can be free. Councilor Hugason?
Thank you. Yeah, I am so delighted as we see the resolution before us. 2007, about 17 years ago, when this first came up, I was on council and I think helped at least craft the policy that we're able to adopt now. Because this came out, there was a few things. I think we had the, you know, the doughboy on the bottom. We had a few things. But then, you know, the city said, oh, well, I don't know if we can be putting things on there. So we crafted a policy that said, hey, we're going to make this actually be the, have a plan that is moving forward. And so since 2007, there's been other things that have been added that all are specific and thank you all, like the Purple Heart and like when Desmond Dawes' son came a few years ago where we got to dedicate that. I've known several of the Purple Heart folks from World War II that have since passed away, but they were excited to see that be done and several of you that are here now with the Purple Heart. We thank you for it. This isn't just a bunch of stairs that we kind of run up and down. This means something and you all know that it means something. This is the ground that says, hey, this is- This is the ground that says, hey, this is the city honoring our veterans, honoring the folks that were willing to give their lives and pay that ultimate sacrifice. We have the flag that's outside that is the American flag that is right there. A while back, fortunately, one of your members still may said, hey, we're not getting the light on there. We need the light better. And I'm glad the city manager and staff were able to fix that very quickly so we could keep the flag up that is adjacent to the monuments. I'm so thankful that we have this here. A friend of mine was just in town last week where we had, his mother passed away, and we had to go to the Circuit Court Clerk's office. And when he came down, walking just those first flights of stairs, he said, you know, my, this is nice. There's places that think that we're going to protest, some of you who came back to a bad time back when you came back from Vietnam. I mean, that wasn't a good thing. And so thankful that you guys have just said, hey, we care about those that are still out there, your brothers in arms that are risking their lives, and you're out there every Friday. You're recognizing that this is your place, that you are making sure that this honors, whether it be the Gulf War, whether it be the Purple Heart, whether it be World War I, whether it be World War II. And I'm so thankful to see what you've done. I'm so thankful to approve it. And as Steve had said, it'll be unanimous just because of Steve's sheer will and tenacity. I'm so thankful what you've done with the bricks in front. I mean, this is, this is your place, and you guys take care of it better than the city government ever could. Because the city government would say, oh, well, we need this or we need that. And you said, no, we're going to do it ourselves. And thank you, and I'm glad that you are doing that. And anytime you need to raise private funds, I know you know that you can go to Mary Jane, and she'll be happy to give them to you all. So, no, anyway. Thank you. Glad to approve it, so.
Any other discussion or comments, contributions?
I think this is, it's a great thing. Obviously, I'm going to support it. And one of the things that just kind of comes to mind when I'm looking at this picture right here, because it's just such a neat picture, how it really isolates the memorial itself. And I see the very top, we've got a Civil War memorial. I think, Mr. Bendah, one of the things that we need to look at in the future is how can we codify protections for these memorials so long after we're all gone? Nobody can ever take these down.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Dolan?
I just want to say thank you. When I first came to Lynchburg in 1978 and opened my business, Monument Terrace was my very favorite place to go. As a matter of fact, I made it my logo on my initial stationery, but I just want to say thank you for all that you've done for our country and for us.
Oh, Dr. Wilder?
Again, just thank you for your service, and thank you for how you come out every Friday. I don't care what the weather's like, you're so consistent. So we appreciate the service and your commitment to spreading the message about the service that you have given, and just also reminding us the importance of supporting our troops. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank y'all, Steve. He's a man after my own heart. He's a Marine. I have a brother that did 30 years for me. I missed my turn, but my brother did 30 years. Came out from San Diego. I performed his wedding, and he wanted to take pictures at Monument Terrace because he's a Marine. And thank you. Thank y'all. And like I said, Steve, this is going to be unanimous. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
It would be absolutely rotten if I didn't say anything, since everybody else has said something. But nothing else can be said. I see so many friends in the audience, and I'm humbled by the tradition, the patriotism that lives on here in Lynchburg by you all. I thank you. And there are a number of votes, I think, in anyone's time in doing this that will be towards the top, and this is definitely going to be one that I would echo Councilmember Missions' sentiments that should live on till Judgment Day.
I agree.
Just one thing, if I may. Rather than us voting individually, like we've done today since we couldn't use that, if we could unanimously vote simultaneously and show our standing and voting and saying yes.
I say we just stand and clap.
So we got to make, so we have the motion first?
Let's go ahead and vote, and I say if you're always in favor, stand and clap.
Yeah!
Let me get a picture. Stay right there.
Pay for the record.
Okay, we are now adjourned until March 12 at 4:00 p.m., and we will meet in the second floor training room.